So it's 6 o'clock. We are calling our meeting to order. We have school director Morris, Van Stratten, and myself here today. Our other two board members let us know a week or so ago that they were going to have a conflict tonight. I'd like to start with any additions or deletions from the agenda for today. Labor Reuben's had a chance to see it?
Which way?
Great. So we'll leave it as is. And I'd like to approve -- I'd like to -- hopefully, we've all had a chance to review the minutes from December 18th. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes from December 18th.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll go ahead and approve the minutes from the December 18th meeting. We have three discussion items tonight. The first is our ESAR report, which was -- is located in our board folder. It included several things. The most was the additional -- or the work that Brian Duff has done to prepare a grant for submission at a rate of about $150,000 to supplement our summer program. So we're hoping that that comes in. And as a reminder, our ESAR program -- our catch fire programs are continuing to be grant funded, and we were not able to put them into our local budget for this year. The ESAR -- the work on the playground design and the outdoor learning spaces, which is the ESAR-funded programs, we've moved forward on that. And we're looking at making some tough decisions to fit within the budget parameters put forth in our ESAR plan. We also received an update on the construction projects that are either necessitated by changes to building improvement related to energy efficiency as required by the state and/or ESAR-funded projects that need to be completed by September 1st. We continue to look for public input on our ESAR program and on our ESAR spending, and you can do that at our website or by reaching out to Charlotte Holt directly at our district office. Are there any discussion items around the ESAR report? Seems like it's not necessarily new information from anything we've discussed up to this point.
Can you remind me with summer catch funding, if we don't get this grant?
We have it budgeted in our regular ESAR. But this was just another opportunity that we could reassign those funds for some of those construction projects that are coming over budget.
Any other discussion regarding that? Okay. So as many of us are aware, we spent this morning in our finance committee meeting finalizing our budget for presentation today. We -- I'm going to turn it over to Karen, but I just want to make sure that we don't lose this opportunity to share with the public the reality of the statewide funding scheme and the position our board is finding ourselves in, which is, given the statewide parameters, we're in a position where in order to actually be able to affect because of the common level of appraisal, the overall tax rate, we would be looking at around $3.5 million. We'd have to cut over our overall budget. And all increased spending puts us below the statewide cap, which really is a one-time opportunity to address issues that are going to result in long-term savings. We're very careful not to use this one-time year of the funding cap to commit the district to any long-term financial obligations. We were very careful about that. So we hope to spend that money doing only things that are going to save us money in the long run. Okay, Karen.
Yeah.
Yay.
I'm just going to provide the updates from our other presentations. Again, our focus, for those that are joining us this evening, welcome. You know, we focused our budget and our guidelines are really based on our strategic plan and the specific needs of our students. And so we are committed to providing students with the resources and support they need to follow those unique pathways towards respectful, caring, lifelong learners, and contribute to the global community. So at all portions of our budgeting process, this was our focus. What wasn't at the forefront until now is the common level of appraisal, which has nothing to do with our local budget, but impacts the local taxpayers. And if you can just look at this chart here, what's in red is what the school district and the school board has the capability to control the costs. Above is really based on the sale of our properties and how, over the last few years, you know, it's kind of like those impacts from COVID. People were buying up our properties and paying much higher rates or much higher values than what our properties were valued at. And this is common across the state. I think Jacob had done some quick math, and it was like 80-something percent of the communities are in a spot now that they have to do a reappraisal in their communities because properties are just selling at higher amounts. So when it comes to our taxes, our educational taxes, we're impacted by the common level appraisal and how properties are valued at. And since they're coming in lower, we're selling higher than what they're valued at. Our big increase is this .49 on top of the $1.29. And if you look year after year, we've done a pretty good job of keeping our education cost per student, pretty level. There's actually a little decline, but the last two years, we've had a significant increase in the actual tax rate for the communities because of the property. And so as we were -- we just received this information and shared with the school board this morning, and we had some discussions last week. I think it came out last Friday, maybe? It was just recently. Through our budgeting process, we had looked at making initial cuts to our budget and had looked at, you know, could we cut the positions that we've added over the last several years from ESAR? And it would have such a significant impact on our school and supporting student needs that it just is not meeting the needs of our strategic plan or allowing us to even support the minimal needs of our students. So we did look at a number of different options, and no matter which option we took, whether you're decreasing or increasing, it's still the same tax rate on the homeowners is what the homestead tax rate would end up being, which is a significant increase, a 24% increase, 35 cents from last year. Now granted, majority of the Vermonters don't pay the homestead rate. They get some sort of income sensitivity credit on their taxes. But a lot of people that have over the $138,000 now income would be paying this homestead rate, which is, based on our budget, is going to increase. So we're looking at, you know, if we cut those positions or if we incorporate them in the local, it didn't seem to make a difference on the end homestead tax rate. Now, what we did just discuss this morning in our finance committee was really taking advantage of this new public policy change that was implemented and what could we do with one-time funds that, again, doesn't change the tax rate at all, but would help support the needs of our building. We're focusing more on buildings because we want to make sure it's sustainable. So what do we know that we need to tackle in the next few years for maintenance-related projects? And how can we put one-time money into the budget to support those facility improvements? Now, we have a lot going on with ESAR funds and that we've been working on the last several years. We have a lot of projects going on even this summer. But there were several projects that were identified that weren't allowable projects under ESAR. So we couldn't put them in there. For example, the -- I'm drawing a blank.
The lights.
Oh.
The light.
Yeah. LED lighting is one of them, that we're required to change out all of our bulbs to LED. We couldn't put that in ESAR. We also couldn't put the doors, our door handles. Right now, we have a safety concern with our door handles, so we'd like to replace those. There's magnetic doors that we'd like to do. So if there isn't a fire in our emergency and a door is left open, it will close automatically. Those type of costs are built in there. The state of Vermont just did an assessment of all the schools throughout the state, and they identified that our fire alarm system is at end of life. So those are all projects that we would have put in ESAR, but they weren't COVID-related to COVID or weren't allowable expenses. So what we decided this morning in the facilities, the finance committee meeting, was to actually take advantage of the 5% cap that is set on our school budget, which is that 6 cents, and allow us to put an additional $1 million into the budget to support these one-time costs that we're going to have to do down the road. And it would give us this one year to take advantage of that. These numbers have changed a little bit. For those of you that have seen the local budget numbers, we have gotten some numbers in. We've updated some numbers related to our salaries and benefits as those have changed. We found some stipends that needed to be added in there. We have some more estimates that we're hearing from some of our area schools for high school tuition. So that has increased a little bit from the last report we've given. And then the additional $1 million is a huge increase to the budget from our prior discussions and presentations to the community. So we are looking at a 19.3% increase on our budget. $31,186,579 is the proposed expenditures. And I believe the last budget was a 12.9. So that $1 million and those changes in anticipated costs for tuitioning high school students have increased the budget, but it's still a 6%, a 5% increase with a 6% increase to the tax rate before the common level appraisal. So it still doesn't change that 24%, no matter how we look at it. That is the percent increase for the homestead tax rate. But the additional students that we're able to count now with the new weighting with the state, it is allowing us a little bit more tax capacity this year. We anticipate a little change for future years, but for this year, it is one-time money available to us. And for those that are impacted by the homestead tax rate and do not receive any credits -- so this is before any tax credits. This is the estimated increase. And if you look compared to last year, this is the amount last year, if you had, or I'll take a $200,000 home, you had an increase from the common level appraisal of $398. And this year, the common level appraisal is impacting the tax rate by $980. So it is a significant increase to a homeowner. Divide that out, this is for annual $105 would be the increase from the prior year. And again, our impact on our budget is 6 cents, but when you apply the common level appraisal, it increases substantially.
So I think it's, you know, it's a fair statement that none of us are happy with the impact on the taxpayers. We have very little control. And ultimately, we feel like this budget is the best return on investment we can do this money for the voters, taxpayers.
I have a question. May I just -- I missed something in the $1 million that you added today or whenever you -- your finance committee met. Did I understand or did I misunderstand that that is for future projected costs that will not fall into the ESAR funds? I mean, like, not something you're planning on doing now, but that it's for future?
No, it's something that we were planning on doing, but we didn't have the funding to do the projects, and we couldn't use grant funding to apply it. With the way this tax cap works, you could add in $1 million or not, your taxes aren't going to change. So why wouldn't we? If we know we need to do these safety concerns, security and safety concerns, why wouldn't you take advantage of the cap and add it in now when you have this cap and not have any impact? If we waited and did it next year, it would have a -- it could have a significant impact.
We don't anticipate the cap continuing.
Can you explain to me how it has no impact?
Can you go back to the slide with the comparisons? Because this is -- I think that will be helpful.
So I see your percentages stay steady, 24.65%.
Yep.
I do not understand how that stays steady, given the --
I know. It's kind of funny because this is the budget.
We've walked through this with all of our staff. She's giggling because we've had to do this with Linda. Like, it's very -- it's still does it. It's very -- it's like, it's counterintuitive.
Do you want me to?
Jacob's our finance guy.
So this recently, their most recent education spending legislation that went through, they changed up how the education formula works, and they wanted to give a transition period for people that this adversely affected. What they did for that is if your education per equalized pupil for now long-term weighted ADM is under 9.9%, your property tax gets capped at 5% no matter what else. So at all of these portions, we are still within the 9.9% cap. And as a result, our property tax just stays flat at 5%. The only way to get under that is if we get under, and I think the number, if we went off of just the original ESAR incorporated with the local budget, was approximately $2 million of additional before we even see any impact in the other direction. So because we're in that situation of where we're under the 9.9%, but over the 5%, it just stays at 5% for the actual property tax rate.
So the actual property tax rate?
Maybe 5%.
The school portion?
Yeah.
But that doesn't have anything to do with the state's entire budget, does it?
The state is supposed to equalize that out by changing the yield, which will only -- which can affect other districts in their calculation if they are not capped.
And our understanding is that majority of the districts around the state are making these same decisions we are, which is why this cap is going to become problematic to continue next year, as was originally intended. But our job is, yeah, to return the best ROI, the best return on investment we can do for our taxpayers and our kids.
We could lay off 20 teachers. We could lay off more than 20 teachers, and it wouldn't save a single penny on taxes. We could take out the $1 million in building maintenance, and it wouldn't change a single thing. And no, it doesn't make sense. The state ends up paying for it, and it's a great deal for St. Johnsberry. It's not a great deal for the state. But frankly, I can't turn down that deal for the town and the school. It's not very often that the students' interest and the town's interest as a whole align that this is the case where it does.
I also think we really dug into, I mean, a couple weeks ago, the question we asked. I was like, what's row zero, right? Like, is there a row zero? Like, what does it look like to change that 24% number? Really need to know what it is. Of course, the CLA hadn't landed yet, so we were guessing at what the CLA number was going to be. And the answer, which I think, I mean, Jacob described it in numbers, and you just mentioned 20 people. I mean, it's $3-plus million from where we were that we would need to cut. And we really did ask hypothetical questions about what that could look like. And ultimately, I agree that the best deal or the best thing we can do within our power and the things that we can control is to not cut as gravely as we would need to cut to change that 24% as much as I gave the 24%. It's profoundly confusing, though. Profoundly.
And it's frustrating, the overall number, the 35 cent increase is frustrating, but I am happy with the 6 cent increase that the school district has provided. That's a reasonable increase, given the inflation and the increased cost. The 29 cent CLA number is not reasonable. Unfortunately, that's not a school board factor.
We've been asked some really tough questions over this process, and a lot of it was very warranted in terms of how we -- what levels of accountability, particularly from a line item budget perspective. And this is the most accountable budget I've seen in my time. One of the things that's important to remember when we look at our budget is the major cost drivers of our budget. And we had a pie chart we looked at very, and, you know, especially, you know, the special education is federally mandated. That's a number that we have very little control over. And then we have even a decrease in control over a lot of our numbers because we have high school tuition. That takes a large, flexible pot of money that is just right off of our plate and becomes -- I will say, the work, what we have been asking, particularly of our independent schools, is going to continue to increase. We really -- those discussions are ongoing, and they're going to continue to be ongoing because our students are our students. You know, if they don't make it at the academy, they're still our students, and we still have an obligation to educate them. And we find them places, and sometimes it takes a lot of, you know, the amount of transportation dollars we spend just getting our students to where they need to be is astronomical, hundreds of thousands of dollars in past years. That's one of the reasons why we bought some of the vehicles with our ESAR money, one-time money, because it's going to save us in the long term. We're not writing huge checks to town taxi if we're able to move our students around and get them to where they need to be. I hope the state takes a look at the CLA and really, this is a statewide issue that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Thank you for your clarity.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking the question.
And your work. For being taxpayers, we have to be concerned.
At this level of increase, it's unsustainable.
We have to be concerned. And we realize it's not just from this, but enough isn't -- enough public input is not given in this town. So we just thought we'd come and hear out the school board, and then we'll
Go to the town. We're really glad you're here. We appreciate it.
And the reality is, I've heard from a lot of people who, once they read the Caledonian Record article about the proposed school budget, were instantly saying, and I'm a teacher, by the way, not in this district, were saying, we're going to vote down the school budget. And I said, well, I want to understand what's happening. But my question to you is, do you have an alternative plan if this does not go through? Just from the clear number of people within this town that I have heard say without knowledge of what it takes to build a school budget, and I actually have some familiarity with what's happening with the state there. And so do you have an alternative plan that can quickly go to vote if this gets voted down?
I mean, I think the reality is, and this is what the internal conversations we have, we feel responsible for bringing this budget to the voters, knowing what we know.
Yeah.
If the town votes it down, that is what it is. We will, you know? But if we don't bring this to the town, we don't feel like we're doing our jobs.
Understand that.
We're going to have a hard time finding 3.5. That's going to be some really, really hard decisions and huge impacts on our students. And it's actually probably going to decrease our property taxes very little, given that the CLA number's not going to go away. That's never going to -- that's not going to change this year. So we, you know, we need to do our -- we're going to do what we can to try to get this message out. We want to read, and we want to meet with the paper. We want to have a conversation with them so that they understand it. It's important for us to have these conversations. We'll be sharing this information at town meeting, on town meeting day, and it'll be in our report. And I, you know.
I think it's important, Abby, that you, as a board, present this as not just a this district problem. I mean, in my school district, I'm up at Lake Region in Orleans, we're facing the same thing.
Yep.
You know, so that's OCSU. I know that much of the area around us is facing the same thing. And so I think it would be in good form to collect that data around proposed budgets around you to show that it's not a singular issue.
Yeah. And I think Karen's done that. We're happy to do that. That's important for us to do.
And to get that out there to people.
And one of the things that I want, that I wish, that I hope people understand is if you actually look at the per pupil spending, which is, again, actually something that we have some control over, we're one of the lowest in our regions, and we're below the statewide average. We're not spending more per pupil than anybody around us, if not spending less. And many years ago, we were way less, which was causing a lot of issues in terms of deferred maintenance on our building. We were losing teachers. We were having a hard time. We were underfunding our finance office. I mean, there's a lot of things that had very tangible money dollars associated with deferring those expenses.
Yeah, and also, the new funding formula, which you're probably familiar with in your school, is actually counting for the first time since 1996, our high school students and giving us credit. So our, it's not equalized pupils anymore, it's long-term weighted, average daily membership students. But we're actually getting funding to support more students. So it actually gives us some tax capacity. In this first year, we're seeing that that's how you can add more to your budget with no impact and with that cap. So it's, yeah, it's really hard to comprehend.
I call it a scheme for a reason because it feels like a scheme. I did notice.
Well, I'm sure they're talking about it at the state level because it's
It was not the intent of the legislation, I think that's fair to say, but it's the reality of what we're confronted with.
And we have to remember that it's a state-funded system. So if you don't use it, right, we, last year, I don't have the numbers for this year, but last year, we asked for $20 million. St. Johnsberry paid $7 million. Your taxpayers paid $7 million out of that $20 million request. Someone else, another community, paid the other portion, right? So we're asking for 26 doesn't mean that's what St. Johnsberry's going to pay, right? It's a state, it's a shared system. So that's also hard to understand.
Okay. I'm going to skip to committee updates. I think we've done finance. Is there any additional discussion around the finance committee?
No.
Okay. Do you have a building update for us, Peter?
Yeah, the building committee did be, but we largely just discussed Charlotte's ESAR update. I think just the key takeaway there is that we'll start bidding bids in March for the projects for the summer, so that's the timeline on.
Great. And one thing to always remember, this is to share with the public, is that, you know, whereas, you know, we call it the playground project, but what we really are doing is dealing with our drainage issues. We've got significant drainage issues. Great. One thing to always remember, this is shared with the public, is that, you know, whereas, you know, we call it the playground project, but what we really are doing is dealing with our drainage issues. We've got significant drainage issues of the way that the, and it's causing issues with our concrete, and it's causing a lot of flooding issues on our field. Our field becomes almost inaccessible because it gets water on it and then it freezes. And so, you know, it is very much a drainage issue, or drainage project as much as it is new playground equipment. And the statewide audit of those, you know, safety things, we're having to look at putting some of those things at the top of our list, because obviously, safety and security needs to be paramount. So thank you, guys, for your work on that and sharing that report with the state. Policy, I don't think we have, do we have a policy update?
Yeah, we met last week. We reviewed six, recommended, required policies, which are mostly format changes from the VSBA, but we'll be putting those that are, moving those forward at our next board meeting.
Okay, great. What did I miss? PR. Can hold table that for right now? Is there another, is there any?
We have a.
You have a map? Okay. We have one item on our consent agenda today, that's Karen's superintendent's report, which basically consisted of the budget. Oh, and the other thing, the other item in Karen's board report is the announced tuition rate. So these are our tuition rates. We've actually increased, we looked at sort of where we were statewide, and so these are people who are coming into our district. This is what we're asking the choice students, either from Kirby or in other places that are coming into our building. So we've actually increased a little bit of that. And that is something that I've asked Karen to look at, is, you know, we have, you know, we have our line, we have expenses, we also have revenue. What money are we leaving out there that we can recoup? So this is a place where we'd be able to recoup a little bit of money by meeting closer to the statewide average for our tuition. So we were asking for about $12,000 per student, I'm sorry, let's do 17,000 per student in '24, and then we're going up to 18,500 for 2025. Is there anything else on that, Karen, that you want to add?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. So that moves us down to our two action items.
Do you want to move public comment up before we vote on the budget? Is there a title? I think there's anyone online, but.
I'm willing to do that, that's fine with me. Polish it down at the beginning, will you change it?
It didn't say moves, it's added.
Is there anyone online that would like to add any additional public comment, particularly as it relates to reflection of our superintendent's budget report? Has Todd been on the line?
No.
No? Okay. Is there any other questions from the room? Okay. Good. So hearing none, I'm going to move on to our action items. I'll start with the easy one, the announced tuition rate. And the specific here, I'm going to look for a motion from the, or I'm asking for a motion from the board to approve the per pupil cost to attend St. Johnsbury School at 18,500 per pupil for both elementary and secondary education, meaning 7 through All in favor, please say aye.
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 Did you make the motion?
I was going to say, do you need a motion? You can put me down for that. I move it.
You ought to, okay.
Whose motion was it?
Colleen's, technically.
I support it.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing, any opposed? Hearing none? We'll go ahead and increase that. Lastly, approve our 2025 school district budget with some unfortunate implications for our taxpayers, but believe that it is the budget that is the best return on investments for the taxpayers of St. Johnsbury at, so how do I do, you want to?
Because the number in the report, we need the number from.
We need the 29.
The 30. It's not, right?
Yeah. Her number is different than that.
All right.
So it's the 31,186,579?
Yep. Is that sound right, Jacob?
Yep, that is.
That's right? Don't make me do it again.
No, that one's correct.
Okay.
Can you say that one more time?
Well, we're going to do, so.
31,186.
Where is it? 31.
579.
86.
Almost 8675, you're not enough.
We are going cautionary, we heard Danville screwed up their warrant last year, so we want to make sure our number is right, so we don't have to. So at this point, I'm recommending the board approve a budget amount at $31,186,579 as presented in our meeting today. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget as proposed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any one opposed? Hearing none? We will put this to the voters, and we'll see what they have to say. Okay. Doesn't feel good. It doesn't. Look alive.
That's the best that we could.
Let me just, okay, so is there any further public comment before we close meeting?
Or your request, we can.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
It's kind of, the numbers were changing right up since after.
I realize that.
So, but we'd be more than happy.
And we recognize the task is difficult.
Yeah. Any feedback, though, like any questions, the more questions we hear up front, it helps us to better prepare, so don't hesitate to.
Well, I think to make noise about something that you really don't know what you're talking about or taking up interest in to find out shouldn't be made. So, you know, if there's problems or questions that you don't ask, then how can you consciously vote yes or no on something?
Yeah. Well, we really respect that, that, like, I hope that all the voters are able to ask themselves whether they understand it and, and, I've been trying to figure out how I want to say this. It's good, it's a compliment, Karen, you'll take, you'll like it. No, the answers I'm getting from our current administration feel like real answers. And if I don't get the, if I don't, if there's not a real answer that's been given, I'm, I will get it. And so I really invite anyone with questions to ask them, because you will get a real answer. It's not always the one we want sometimes, which is, which is, I'll take it. The transparency is really important to me, and I don't think I could say it with quite so much fidelity in years past, but I can say that now. That's what I want to say.
That's good to hear. Yeah, really good.
Okay, so it is now 6:38, and I would say we're record time, missing two of our board members, maybe that's why. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at 6:39. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll adjourn our meeting.